Meeting of the Clarksville Montgomery County Board of Education will now come to order. First item on our agenda is to say the Pledge of Allegiance and have a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item will be our Point of Pride Awards. Dr. Lynn Vetter.
Yes, I'd like to welcome our Chief Communications Officer, Anthony Johnson, to announce tonight's Points of Pride.
Good evening, Board. As you all are aware, we've had some significant severe weather this evening, so I know several aren't going to be here tonight. Do want to share that we've received some reports of some damage through the community, but no injuries at this time, but we just want to keep everyone in our thoughts and prayers. But we will continue with Points of Pride for those that are here. In the first round, we have yet again, our JROTC teams are what I consider the best in the nation, and they are here tonight for winning some national accolades. So I'm going to call each school up. If I could have Kenwood High School, all of the lead cadets that are here representing, along with administrators and their coaches. And as they make their way up, I'm going to read, because they won quite a few awards. The drill team at Kenwood High School, at the national championship, won first place overall armed division in the All-Service National Drill Championship Division III. They also took home first-place unarmed commander, first-place armed color guard, fourth-place unarmed inspection team, fourth-place unarmed regulation team, and fourth-place armed regulation team. Additionally, their fitness team also competed and took home second place overall in the All-Service Mixed Division. First place in the 3K team run, fifth place in the physical team test, fifth place in team double jump, and fifth place in the pull-ups and flex arm hang. We thank coaches Austin, Sergeant Austin, and Sergeant Major Aaron Keener for their support of all of these cadets. And I think, did we get the certificates over? Alright, so congratulations, Kenwood High School. Alright, and next, if I could have the Montgomery Central High School representatives from JROTC to please come forward. Montgomery Central High School, at the national competition, took home a third-place overall unarmed division, first-place unarmed color guard team, and third-place unarmed color guard team. And they are instructed by their coach, Command Sergeant Major James Manning. Congratulations, Montgomery Central High School. And from West Creek High School, if the representatives could please come forward. So I'm going to start by announcing something that Colonel Lightner shared with me, that for the first time in over a decade, one of our air rifle teams made it to nationals. And so, our West Creek High School air rifle team qualified for the National Air Rifle Three Par Championship, and they are under the direction of Sergeant First Class Mackie Joe Slate. In addition to the air rifle team, their drill team won first place overall in the unarmed division in the All-Service National Drill Championships Division II, first-place dual unarmed exhibition, first-place dual unarmed color guard team, third-place armed inspection team, third-place unarmed exhibition team, and fourth-place armed color guard team. And under the direction of First Sergeant Daryl Lookett. Congratulations, West Creek High School. Alright, and next, if anyone is here from Clarksville High School for the mock trial team, I see Mr. Buchanan and a few students, if you all would come forward. It seems like every year, we have students from the Clarksville High School mock trial team earning state wins, and they are here tonight. I do want to give a special shout-out to their coach, Mr. Buchanan, who's retiring this year after many years of service. And we're excited to congratulate Ava Houston, who won the best defense attorney in the state, Adisha Grimes, who won the best defense witness, Trinity Smith, the best plaintiff attorney, and Ramisha Raeda, the best plaintiff witness runner-up. Congratulations to the Clarksville High School mock trial team. Alright, is Cade Dieterding here? Cade? Alright, Cade, if you could come forward, along with any Rossville High School representatives. So Cade has been no stranger, I think this is his third or fourth time here for Points of Pride. And tonight, we're excited to announce that out of the tens of thousands of submissions across the nation, Cade is one of just a few hundred who has won a National Merit Scholarship. Alright, and next for a first, not only a first for us, but a first for the state, if I could have the Montgomery Central High School girls' flag football team to please come forward. So as you may know, this was the first year that TWSAA had a sanctioned flag football state invitational. And we are very excited to announce that Montgomery Central High School's team were quarterfinalists. The players on this team are Isabella Rivera, Alyssa Lehman, Madeline Hill, Audrey Leventuski, Libby Dominiak, Brooklyn Daniels, Jocelyn Connor, Katerina Vidovic, Ashley Steele, Aubrey Williard, Tori Oaks, Casey Dowlin, Mallory Burton, Jakaya Oats, Hope Pettis, Leah Minor, Kyra Kelly, Jocelyn Calasi, Rashiah Fleming, Samantha Gordon, Marissa Hernandez, Rihanna Stockling, Georgia Green, Amari Moore, Audra Buckley, Amaronia Moore, Charlie Wall, and Alyssa Coulter. And their coaches are coaches Lehman, Youngquist, and Harp. Congratulations on this historic win. And I do have to share one detail. I found out that you all beat my high school, the Northside High School Indians, but they deserved it, I'm on your team now. So congratulations to the Montgomery Central High School girls. And last, but certainly not least, another name that you have heard several times this year, if Janiya Johnson and the Kirkwood High School representatives could please come forward. In addition to several state wins that Janiya's had, you might remember at the beginning of the year, we started out with a national win. And she's not here tonight, but I do want to share that Janiya was named at the High School National Showcase Tournament, the champion in the girls' 155. That concludes this evening's Points of Pride.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is public conversation. And as the first speaker is making their way forward, I want to make an introduction. Need to welcome some fellow board members from across the state tonight that came to observe our board meeting. Mr. Stephen Haley from Dixon County, Mr. Wayne Shelton, and Jeff Mathes, both of Houston County. And we certainly are always glad to have business with us, and appreciate y'all coming to our meeting. Public speaker, Mr. Megan Wise, I mean, Ms. Megan Wise, I'm sorry. Want to let you know that you have to first turn on the microphone, it's the right silver button, then a timer will display, the microphone will flash, you have one minute left of your time, and after five minutes, it will automatically shut off. Go ahead, hit your button, there you go.
Good evening. My name is Megan Wise, and I'm here tonight as an advocate, a parent, and a member of this community who is deeply concerned about the state of behavioral supports and safety in our schools, both for students and for staff. I want to talk about what's happening in our buildings. Our district is failing to support students with behavioral needs, and at the same time, it's failing to support the educators tasked with teaching and protecting them.
Ms. Frost, your time has lapsed. Christine McNamara, is it McNamar or McNamere? Okay, thank you. Okay, the silver button on the right turns the speaker on. It will turn red.
Is it the one that says press?
You'll have five minutes. It will begin to flash when you have one minute to go. Thank you.
Okey dokey. Howdy. Uh, my name is Christine. I am a Clarksville resident, a student at Austin P., a mother of six students in CMCSS schools, and I am a foster parent in our community. I have grown up and my children attend the Northside Schools. I know that there's a lot of really big initiatives that we've been talking about for our school system, and a lot of them I am a little bit concerned about. Uh, for one, I mean, I knew the vouchers are pretty already on the roll. Um, and we thought we would be seeing no impact on our students, but my son's developmental preschool, uh, the busing for the special needs preschoolers was the first to go, as I've been notified that he will no longer be receiving his transportation in the upcoming school year, along with the fact that his schooling, which has already been rezoned to Liberty Elementary, the developmental preschool has been cut for that school altogether, and he will now be going to Minglewood with no transportation. As he's moving into year four of developmental preschool, sorry. Um, typically, as my other two youngest children also went through developmental preschool in Clarksville, as you move into year DPK four, you begin to attend five days a week along with transportation. However, instead, in this most recent IEP meeting, I was notified that that would not be happening now due to budget cuts. Not only will he not be attending five days a week, as many other students, including two of my other sons, have, but instead, he will be attending two days a week, as he did in year three, which he's currently in, except those will not even be full school days anymore. His hours have instead, they will be cut to two and a half hours of education twice a week. My six-year-old attends Liberty Elementary, and he is in an integrated classroom, no longer in special education, thanks to the accommodations he was able to receive through DPK three and four. My youngest student will not be able to receive those same accommodations. We are seeing the impacts already immediately on special needs toddlers. That was the first area that we decided to cut for the vouchers. That's not my only concern. When I look at things like New Providence, which currently in the cafeteria of New Providence, you will find the electrical box, which is being held closed by a plastic spork. A plastic spork is holding the electric box in the cafeteria of the middle school closed. Northwest is falling apart. But we're building our twenty-sixth elementary school, and where will all twenty-six of those elementary school kids, all twenty-six of the school's worth, what high schools are they gonna attend when the high schools and middle schools are already underfunded over capacity? Uh, I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding. And then we're looking at the DEI initiatives. In these schools where certain members of the school board built their campaign and foundation, New Providence and Northwest, for us to build a platform on that, and then immediately come back and say that DEI is the problem, but not that we're cutting funding for special needs toddlers, not that we are allowing the already disenfranchised students in the most impoverished area of town suffer with inadequacies within their own schools, but DEI is the problem. Is, I, I, I'm really having a hard time comprehending uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion being the problem in these schools versus the misallocation of funds and where we're choosing to cut funds first. I, I, the, the problems with racism has already been alive and well in these schools for a long time. It has, I attended New Providence myself, and these are the most diverse schools. The fact that we're already seeing a drastic increase in blatant racism and sexism in North...
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of consent agenda. I have a motion from Ms. Berry, and a second from Mr. Garland to approve consent agenda. Please cast your votes. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close the vote. Passes seven oh. Next item is policy monitoring. Dr. Lynn Vetter.
Board, please find in your board packet information on executive limitation five, financial administration. This executive limitation has twelve compliance expectations to ensure the director of schools shall not cause nor allow fiscal jeopardy or material deviation from the annual budget or budget policy adopted by the board. All revenues are scheduled to be spent in accordance with the approved budget. No funds have been borrowed to date for the current fiscal year without approval, nor have funds been expended from the fund balance without prior authorization. The actual ending fund balance will always be far greater than three percent based on current levels of revenue and expenditures. Payrolls are processed per the published calendar, and all other obligations are paid in a timely manner. Purchases are made consistent with state and district procurement codes. Sufficient internal controls are in place as documented in annual financial audits. In addition, all board accounts are audited annually by the state comptroller's office. Likewise, individual school accounts are audited per a contract with certified public accountants, and receivables are pursued as appropriate. Updates regarding revenue collections, rising costs, and capital projects are provided to the board through work sessions. To conclude, any proposed changes to the budget are approved by both board and county commission, and quarterly financial reports are provided. Chairman Griffey, this concludes executive limitation five.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept EL five? I have a motion from Mr. Nelson, and I saw a second, wait, one, second from Mr. Mayberry. Any discussion? Please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close the vote. It passes seven oh. EL thirteen, Dr. Lynn Vetter.
Board, please find in your packet information on executive limitation thirteen, career technical education program. This executive limitation has three compliance expectations to ensure the director of schools shall not fail to develop high-quality high school CTE programs. Specifically, CMCSS has reviewed local, regional, state, and national job markets to determine if our current programs are meeting the needs of students and preparing them for current and future jobs. The fifth annual Senior Hiring Expo was held just last week on May fourteenth. Over fifty local businesses and industry partners with at least five entry-level positions, as well as representatives from multiple branches of the military participated. Human resource personnel from each participating business shared company and available position overview, salary and benefit information, as well as application and hiring protocols. You will notice in your packet the program expansions, dual enrollment opportunities, and industry certifications. The CMCSS instruction team has collaborated with other agencies and funding resources to allocate funds to support effective career technical educational programs that have also extended to our middle schools. Finally, we will continue to evaluate our five-year plan, and this will include a review of current course offerings, student enrollment, and current and future job market trends. Chairman Griffey, this concludes executive limitation thirteen.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept EL thirteen? I have a motion from Mr. Garland. I have a second from Ms. Berry. Any discussion? Are you numb? Please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close the vote. It passes seven oh. Next item in reports, high school academic support. Dr. Lynn Vetter.
Yes, so tonight we have the high school academic supports for students, and Dr. Kimmy Saharsky will be presenting this evening.
Evening, board. We're gonna be adding to the things that you've been listening to about our already high school academics, like our academies, et cetera. And so in the high school academic supports, we have three areas that we work with. We have those items that go on during the regular scheduled day. Then we have before and after school, and then we have non-traditional programs that go on, and this is year-round. So supports during the regular scheduled day are things like we have a lot of literacy-focused supports, math interventions. We have AB academics courses. This runs in the special ed classes that gives them the extra opportunity to succeed. Inclusion, AVID, RTI, ACT prep, and digital citizenship. So one of the large programs, one of the things that we have to navigate a lot in a highly mobile district is keeping children, students, on track for graduation. And so one of the programs that is offered is credit recovery. It's offered year-round. Uh, we take the students from where they're at and provide them the opportunity to pass courses they were struggling with. Grade recovery was developed because uh, often when students failed the first nine weeks of school, they often said, "Well, I'm through," and did nothing the next nine weeks. The way grade recovery works is we provide them the opportunity to be successful in the second nine weeks while recovering the first nine weeks, so they don't waste an academic year. Time is short when you're in high school. Then we have additional supports that you'll see throughout the day. Obviously, there are school counselors. We have the military family life counselors that we work in partnership. We have centerstone counselors. We have care solists. Um, we have the youth villages partnerships, student success coaches, um, social workers, family and transition liaisons, and students with disability transition to work. All of these opportunities are addressing the needs of the students to keep them on track so that they'll be ready to enter the workforce or go on to post-secondary. And then before, after, and summer. And so one of the largest grants that we compete for and have in this district is the Army Youth Programs in your neighborhood. In the neighborhood, you often hear about APEN. We talk about, we get about a million dollars in funding each year, and this provides programming in the middle and high school. And it's actually around several areas. It's about remediation intervention, acceleration, but it's also about targeting students' interests to keep them engaged and return to school. Um, and then TDOE, we have a large grant that comes in the summer, and this is about the ELA and math supports for the rising ninth-grade students. We also do a high school one-on-one in combination with that. What is it like to begin high school? And then we have our before and after school. So there's a credit recovery program that runs during the school for students that have an open time, but we also run that after school and before school in case students need that opportunity. Grade recovery works the same way. Um, we're doing all those supports about academics what, to keep the students on track. Remember, in Tennessee, the rule is you have four years and a summer essentially to earn your regular education diploma. This is just an overview, so you can see how many credits the students are accessing, um, and how many students participate. So at half-year, we're just getting ready to finish the academic year. Um, in December, we had already had one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine students that participated in credit recovery, and ninety-three percent of those students reclaimed their grade, the one that they had failed. Um, the group that seems to struggle the most with that is ninth grade, and that's because they're early in their high school career. Those that are closer toward the end, the urgency is there. So after school, we have everything that you could think about. We have tutoring. We have homework assistance. We have AP support, dual enrollment support. We run open library programs for those students who would like to do those things. We have ACT prep. We have boot camps. We have the TCAP, EOC, um, and boot camp opportunities as well. And then other activities you'll see is we have a lot of things that are around the science and mathematics fields and STEM. So you'll see robotics, Cyber Patriot, the Academic Bowl, Science Olympiad, JROTC Extended Day, fitness programs, clubs, and activities aligned to the students' interests. They are welcome to introduce a program that they would like to have, and we go through a process to provide them that opportunity. We also remember the arts with art, music, and theater. And just to give you an overview of what we're supporting in the middle and high, um, through these grants and opportunities currently, um, high school and middle school daily attendance runs between two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one hundred, and approximately eight hundred and fifty, nine hundred of those students are identified as military-connected. And now we're getting ready for summer. I'll be back later to talk about what summer's gonna look like. Um, we're just now getting everything, um, in the, in the systems and all, but we'll run some traditional programs that you know about from our days. Um, and then we'll have the, um, what we call the rising ninth-grade programs, and we'll have the high school one-on-one programs. Um, and all of these are targeting to give students the greatest opportunity to be successful when they're in high school, started off on the right foot. And, um, just to give you an overview, during the summer of twenty-two, twenty-three, the participating credits earned by the students and keeping them on track was over twenty-one hundred. And so that's great for us. It keeps our graduation rate, as you know, last year was ninety-five point two. And so we wanna keep focused that we're providing every student the greatest opportunity to exit this district college and career-ready, depending on what they, what, what their desire is. Questions? Questions? Thank you.
I don't believe it was. Thank you for your report. Uh, next item, board discussion and consideration. First item is twenty-five, twenty-six student code of conduct updates. Is there a motion to accept the updates in the code of conducts? Have a motion from Mr. Mayberry? I have a second from Ms. Berry. Is there a discussion? Or questions? Mr. Mayberry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to bring up that I would, I would like to see us amend the cell phone, timeframe in which we allow cell phones in, within schools. Um, I got the feedback from what the district had, um, proposed, but I believe with all the discipline and behavior concerns we have seen and heard about from the community, a lot of them comes directly from this issue right here, cell phones. Um, I brought this up last board meeting, the book Angious Generation, but that has an incredible argument about how cell phones are affecting our children. And this is how they are organizing fights and, and other things like that. Um, to allow them to have the cell phones, not in instructional, instructional time, but then in the hallways during lunch, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that we're going to then allow them to have that, and then they can still organize and do the things which we are concerned about, uh, right now. Uh, this is a real tangible fix that we can have to make a real impact for teachers and for our parents and for the safety of our kids. Uh, I've heard testimonies from other districts that when they did this blackout period within the schools, that kids actually spoke to one another and that there was life in the hallways, there was life at lunch, because they had this blackout time, uh, for cell phones where they weren't a distraction within the schools. And again, we're talking about cell phones and talking about the watches. I'm talking about the earbuds and everything. Um, I've, I personally had reached out from teachers, a tremendous amount of teacher, uh, reach out to me and pair reach out, uh, saying that they want this blackout. They don't want this where they can now have it part of the days and not part of the days. They, they want the blackout from what I've heard. Um, the other, uh, teacher, uh, group, PET, they have expressed to me in a conversation that they would be for the blackout from start to finish. So I would like to see that we amend this to make it where the blackout period is from the moment they get, the moment school starts to the moment school ends.
So your amendment to the motion is that schools do a blackout of cell phones from when? From what time?
So from when school starts to school ends, just from that time.
School starts to school ends?
Yeah, that we, we don't allow any of these.
Is there a second to the amendment? Uh, I'm looking for one. Okay, I have a second from Mr. Lanier to amend the, uh, cellphone portion of the code of conducts to a blackout from beginning of school day to the end of school day, instead of how it reads now. Is there any further discussion on that? Mr. Garland.
My, my concern is that we don't, uh, take away the fact that there's, in case of emergency, uh, that they will be available to those children to be able to use them. Uh, we are not running prisons. We're running school system. Uh, we're running places where children come to be educated. I understand that. And the teachers need to be in a safe environment. I understand that. But we shouldn't be treating these kids like they are criminals.
Chris Lanier.
Uh, the reason that I started with this is not the intention to take away phones from students. They still have them in their backpacks. They still have them in the classroom. If anything ever were to happen, I mean, they, they have the access to those. So if they had to flee the building, they would, they'd still be safe and be able to communicate with their parents or whoever they need to. Um, the whole act of this is that they, you know, get back to regular instructional time. So I just wanna make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, would you state the current way it reads currently?
Uh, yes, sir. So, and I just wanna clarify for, for Mr. Mayberry's amendment, um, if, if the board is okay with, so currently, the, the two versions, one said instructional day, which is considered from the beginning of the day till the end. The other recommendation was instructional time, which would have just been class time. And so from a matter of semantics, I just wanna confirm instructional day is, is, is okay with that language. Then the other piece in that, that I just wanted to clarify, the original proposal had stated at the discretion of an administrator. It wasn't a requirement, but at the discretion of administrator, that they could implement, you know, whether it be a reward. It, it, would that still say, or are you, uh, proposing to remove that specific part in the language where it states at the discretion of an administrator?
He'd have to amend his amendment to get that in there. Mr. Mayberry.
Yeah, my intention is not to change that piece. It's, but, so yes, the, so to be clear, to make it a blackout period, uh, during the entire school day. How'd you say it?
Instructional day is what we call it.
During the instructional day. But yes, not, not taking away the admin's, um, ability to, to call a different, different play if he needs to.
Mr. Nelson.
Uh, my only question with this is, um, if there, in the case of an emergency, um, will the administrative staff be instructed to pass along any information to a student who may have to pick up a younger, younger sibling or, um, you know, get, get home earlier to give somebody their medicine or something of that case, uh, some sort of emergency were to pop up? Would the administrative staff be there to support that?
Yeah, yes, sir. And I do wanna clarify that the language in what was, uh, originally presented does state the provision, which is required by law. So it's not something we would be able to change anyway, that in an emergency situation, students would be able to access their phones. And, uh, just like, I, I forgot who commented that, you know, they could have them, the, the rule in the student code of conduct, how it's worded, is that they are powered off and put away. And so that could be in a pocket, a backpack, that sort of thing. And so in the case of an emergency, absolutely, they would be able to get those devices, power them back on, and make contact. And additionally, the law requires, uh, a contact to parents in the case of an emergency. We're already in compliance with that. We already use ParentSquare for that. So we're, to answer your question, yes, that is there, and we would be in compliance with the law.
Thank you. And that would still be there with the amendment? That would still be in place with the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Garland.
My concern was the way, way it was presented, it was from opening a school to closing a school. And there was no delineation between whether or not they would have an option. And so as long as there's an option, I can go along with that. But if there is no option, I can't go for it.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, we're now voting on the amendment. Please restate your amendment. Mr. Mayberry.
Uh, I move that we have a blackout period during the instructional time, but notwithstanding any of the other portions of, uh, the language that was already there. Instructional day, thank you.
Instructional day, okay.
Instructional day.
Thank you. Please open the vote. All those in favor of the amendment? Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close the votes. The amendment passes seven oh. We go back to the original motion to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six student code of conduct updates. We're now with this amended section. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Mayberry.
I just wanna have a great, um, admonishing to, you know, our admins and our staff that the only way this is gonna work is with everybody being involved. So I just wanna really encourage, um, across the district that we really enforce this so that we can have, um, the goal at which we are, uh, looking for. I have, I've heard in the past that, um, maybe one school's doing it and maybe a teacher isn't. And it kind of breaks it all down. So I just wanna make that an admonishment today as, as a board member to, it, just follow through with this so that we can see this change that we're looking for.
Any other discussion? Then we'll vote on the main, on the student code of conduct updates now. Please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close the vote. It passes seven oh. Uh, next item, student school board member. We, as a board, had discussed bringing a student onto the board as a non-voting member. Had a presentation on that in our last work session. Is there any, um, more information we need that? The selection process is what we're voting on that they went over at the last work session. But I do need a motion. Have a motion for Mr. Garland? I have a second for Mr. Nelson. Is there any discussion?
And, and just to clarify, what I think we're asking, there's a proposal to add a GP seventeen to the board's rules. And so that has been proposed, which will take, set the parameters of the non-voting student board member. So what you're being asked to do is to approve this GP seventeen to put that in place. But you are being asked to add an additional provision to your governance policy.
Thank you for correcting me. So we're adopting the, the requirements and, um, participation amount that that student board member will have. Any, any discussion? Mr. Mayberry.
Thank you. I, uh, just wanna say thank you to the district for putting together the guidelines for this. I thought it was really well put together. So everyone who was involved, that, thank you very much. And, um, for those watching at home, we're voting to have a non-voting student board member here, um, that, as soon as we able to, um, potentially come and be a part of it. So I think, I think it's great.
Any other discussion? Please open the vote. Is everyone happy with your vote? Please close the vote. It passes seven oh. Next item, comments before camel screw liaison officer. Next item, comments before Campbell School liaison officer.
Good evening, Dr. Luna Vetter, board members and commissioners. My name is Karen Watkins-Jewf. And on behalf of my counterpart, Laquivia Garrett, and the Fort Campbell Garrison, we would like to thank you for allowing us to be of service. And we want to wish you a great summer. Thank you.
C M C E A representative? P E T representative?
I apologize for being late. I was sitting at school when the tornado warning came, and I thought, we're gonna head to the basement and stay for just a few minutes. I just want to wish all the board members, Dr. Luna Vetter, a happy summer. It's been a long year, but we have really pushed through, and I've seen some great gains and a great achievement from our students. So I don't envy you, as you go through all the graduations, shaking the right hand. I practiced with my fifth graders this week, I said, remember, don't shake with that left hand or you'll be embarrassed. So they did well in their promotion. So thank you very much. Have a good summer.
Thank you. Comments by county commissioners, they must have had a meeting somewhere tonight, or the weather deterred them from coming. We appreciate their normal support, as always. Comments by board members? Mr. Garland?
I would like to thank the staff for the work, and the teachers, especially the teachers, and the students for the work that they put in there over the year. This is a time of the year that I really do enjoy. I have a tendency of attending all of the graduations. And I do that because as a board member, if I don't attend, how can I expect anyone else to want to be there? We set up for those children to be in class nine months out of a year. We expect them to come in and work nine hours out of a day, or whatever the case might be. We expect them to get good grades and qualified to actually go out into the economy or become productive citizens of this nation. You do, yeah, I say, Dr. Luna and staff and team, you guys do a great job. We've heard a lot of complaints about what's not happening, but they don't understand what really is happening in the classroom. As I have been with you for many years, I've found that being part of this district is something that is, is very, is important to me, and it's a pleasure and it's an honor to be a representative. I plan on being there with you for all of the graduations, Dr. Luna, from tomorrow morning through Saturday night. I plan on doing that simply because, like I say, when I sign up to do something, I want to do it all the way. I don't want to be a part-time anything. Again, board members, if you don't have anything to do, I encourage you to come out and watch these kids walk across this stage because that is, to me, the most important job that we have as board members for Montgomery County School System. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, I want to apologize to my fellow board members for being a little bit late. You know, I don't live very far from Outlaw Field, and that's where they had announced that, that they had suspicions of a tornado touching down. And for me and my family, it takes a little while longer to get out of that, that safe space downstairs. So, you know, that kind of put me back just a bit. But, you know, again, Dr. Luna Vetter, congratulations on another successful year. And we've had many challenges this year, some very unique challenges, but we've made it through it. And so just wishing all the teachers a great summer and, you know, thank you for your hard work. Like I said, there's nothing like the heart of a teacher, because it takes a special person to educate a young mind and, and stick with that mind throughout the trials and tribulations. And I just wanted to say, I'll be at most of the graduations, but I won't be at all the graduations. So with that, you know, we'll be here throughout the summer, and everyone have a great summer. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant?
I have a couple things. First, I wanted to mention that my company, I, I own a business, a local business, and we did the interviews with the C M C S S internship with the high schoolers, and it was such an amazing experience. We got the opportunity to interview two high schoolers, and we love them so much, we're bringing them on before the internship actually starts. So I didn't do the interviews, some people on my team did the interviews, and they just were raving about these students. So we cannot wait to get them in and helping. I know the presentation earlier was about the opportunities that our students have, and I just wanted to mention this one as a really cool one. I'm very excited about this. So I'll continue to share our progress with you guys. The other, the other thing, two more things I want, I wanted to comment on is the cell phones. I have a child at middle school, and I have a child in high school, and I was one of the few parents that was able to hold off on cell phones. I finally gave in halfway through my daughter's freshman year of high school, and I noticed such a switch with her in, in not so positive way. I have an amazing daughter, she's usually here, she'd be really embarrassed if I was talking about her right now. Yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up, because she's not here. But she, she, her personality switched, and I, I just firsthand was able to see the difference at the, the impact that these cell phones have on our kids. And so I think that my, my middle schooler doesn't have a cellphone yet, but he learns all kinds of things at school. So I, I'm one hundred percent on board with this. I'm really glad that the board is on board. I, I wasn't sure how we were gonna vote, but I think that this is gonna have a really good positive impact in our schools. So thank you, board members. And then I wanted to read a, a statement. I was quiet today, getting it all in right now. A few meetings ago, Dr. Doughty presented on all the schools and programs of choice, open enrollment, and growing options for our families in C M C S S. It was recently brought to my attention by a virtual school father that the website isn't clear on which board member represents their family. As I started digging into it, I realized that with so many choices and forty-six school zones, that it didn't align with the election boundaries, the school listings didn't accurately reflect the districts we are elected to represent. I personally believe that all seven of us truly represent all students, employees, and families at all schools. However, I want it to be easy for everyone to determine by their home address which district and board member is elected to represent them. For example, there are students from all of our districts who attend C M C S S K through twelve, Virtual, Middle College, Spanish Immersion Elementary, Moore Magnet, and Early Technical College. And with open enrollment and special transfers, I know there are others who live in our districts attending schools outside of the election boundaries. It's also important for me, to me, for all citizens to be engaged and informed voters. After talking with Dr. Luna Vetter, I'm proposing that we replace the school listings under each board member on the website and instead provide an interactive map and other election resources from the Montgomery, Montgomery County Election Commission. This will make it easier for stakeholders to determine the board member elected by the people to represent their district. Anthony and the Communications Department are very much in favor of this proposed change to reduce confusion. There's no policy on this, so we don't have to vote, but I'm simply asking if anyone has any concerns with this proposal to please let me know tonight or at the next meeting. If there are no concerns, I will ask the team to make the change on the website. So just to kind of clarify, currently, we have all board members listed, and underneath our names are the schools that we represent. But as I had mentioned in my statement, there's a lot of students that go to different schools than the address that they actually live in because of these extra programs. And so they already have, as far as I know, they already have this available, and so it's just integrating this technology into our current website. And so that is what I am proposing. Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Mayberry?
Thank you. Ms. Bryant, it's a, it's a great proposal, thank you for bringing that. I just want to say, echo Mr. Garland and Mr. Nelson's, thanking all of our teachers, our, our staff, our district staff, our director of schools, doing an incredible job this year. This is a special year for me. My oldest is graduating on Friday. I don't know how I feel about it. I just was in high school like last week, and so now she's graduating. So, but I am excited for my oldest, April, who will, on Friday, at Clarksville High School, be crossing that stage. And, but thank you for everyone for all your hard work this year.
Mr. Garland?
Yeah, I forgot to mention Mr. Haley and his team that came over to evaluate us. We thank you for taking the time to come out and to do this. I, I, having that job prior to you, I understand that the challenge that you make, especially in this kind of weather. But again, we hope that you have, that have observed and you have seen what you need to see, and we pray that all go well. God bless you. Y'all be safe going home.
Mr. Lanier?
Again, I'll reiterate what Casey said, I appreciate the support from the staff and, and everybody involved in this long process of dealing with these cell phones and the, the full support of the board members. And also I reiterate your, I don't know if you saw my email, but the whole school represented thing. I was looking for the other one for Rossview, and I couldn't find it. So I do support every bit you said with that, so thank you.
Ms. Berry?
I think it's a good idea to have the schools not just listed under us, but have a ma, map as well. But I feel like I represent all of Clarksville, Montgomery County. Whether they're in my district or not, if they contact me, I help them or do the best I can and to refer them to get help. And I want to say, I want to thank the team that came from Houston County and Dixon to evaluate us tonight. Thank you very much, and have a safe drive home. In addition to that, I look forward to graduation every year. And that's the finale. That's the, we're gonna have over ten thousand students graduate this coming week, this week. That's phenomenal. And yes, we will shake every hand, and I love it. I get hyped up, doesn't take much to get me excited, but graduation is one of those times. Because the children have worked very hard, many times from pre-K through twelfth grade. And to see the joy in their faces when they receive their diplomas, it's a blessing. And I pray that they all be successful. And what we do is important. Many people think board members don't, y'all, you all don't do anything. They don't know what we do. They have no clue. But I enjoy doing what I do, serving this community. And I think the fellow board members that we can work together and do what's best for the children of Clarksville, Montgomery County. Thank you.
I'll be brief, but I do want to say thank you to all the staff that made the school year a success, to Dr. Vetter and her leadership team. And I wish the room was full of the support staff, the bus drivers, and everyone that made the school year as successful it was with all the challenges that we had. I'd like to know how many miles we safely transported and how many students through floods and snowstorms and obstructions in the highways from all the storms we've had this year. It's phenomenal, the success that we've had and the support. County Commissioners not here tonight, but they've been very supportive of us this year on, on our budget, desires and needs. And I think with that continued support, the continued involvement and participation of parents, that next year is something just to higher goals and look forward to at this point. Because the challenges, we're used to those. Success is not something that happens, it's something you do. And we're here trying to make that success with its whole team and its whole leadership team and its entire school system. And the graduates that are coming off that stage this weekend, congratulations to them and their families. Because one graduate couldn't do it without the family's support, and the families have something to be proud of. And that concludes my report. Dr. Luna Vetter?
Good evening, board members. First, I would like to mention last week, a huge thank you to Mr. Matt Slight and his team. We tried something new this year called Middle School Rising. So essentially, it's fifth graders and their families who could go to the middle school and check it out and learn that middle school isn't quite so scary as maybe they thought. And so it was a huge success. If you were trying to travel around that evening and were anywhere near a school, sorry for those traffic jams, but it was great. And we got great reports from parents. So thank you very much to, to Mr. Slight and his team. Tomorrow does mark the last half-day of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Thank you to all the administrators, faculty, staff members who have made this a great year. I do hope that everyone gets the time to rest and rejuvenate this summer. And as already mentioned, tomorrow does kick off our eleven C M C S S graduation ceremonies over the next four days. I'm looking forward to spending some time with all of you and, again, shaking all those hands as they cross this stage. Mr. Griffey, this concludes my report.
This meeting is adjourned.